Okay, at this time I'll call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone's patience this evening. We have had a lot to do and getting started back now with our regular meeting. We have with us this evening Pastor Michael Mathis of the Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation. It'll be followed by our pledge of allegiance. And again, we do appreciate everyone's attendance tonight. If you will, all that are capable, please stand for our invocation followed by the pledge.
Almighty God, once again, we've assembled ourselves here together this evening and we acknowledge your sovereignty. We thank you, Lord, for your patience, your great love, your long suffering with us, oh Lord. And we always remind it, God, that even in our best state and at the very best that we can do, many times, Lord, for humanity, we still need you to be involved with our plans and our affairs and the things. And so, we ask you, God, to continue to move upon the board tonight. And we also ask you, Lord, to forgive us for areas of our lives individually as well as corporately where we have failed you or not done the way that you would have us to do to represent this great town of Hope Mills as well as the city of Fayetteville. And so, we thank you. We thank you for your mercy and we thank you for your forgiveness. We're always so very grateful, Lord, and we thank you for our mayor, Mayor Jackie Warner and her family. We ask, God, that you would continue to shield them and protect them as they go out and come in and not only her, Lord, and her family, but the rest of her staff, everybody involved with helping the town of Hope Mills to be the best town that it can be. And, God, we continue to need the ministry, Lord, of our first responders, their willingness to put their lives in harm's way for the people here in Hope Mill as well as Fayetteville. We thank you, God, and we ask, Lord, that you would continue to keep your angels, warring angels, at their back, Lord, in areas where they can't see, shielding and protecting them and their families. And, Lord, I'm especially grateful to even hear parts of how the town of Hope Mill is developing, the economic development as well as everything else, Lord. And I continue, God, to believe that 2019, this year, will also be a year of prosperity. You will continue to develop this place and grow it, Lord, into a town that so many will continue to be proud of, even the citizens of this town, God, we're grateful. And now, Lord, the agenda has been set and we ask you, Lord, to just endow the board once again with your wisdom, we know man's wisdom, but, God, we ask God that you would endow them with your wisdom to execute the things on the agenda. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve our agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing that we have on our agenda is a presentation, and this is a request by Kelly West from Cumulus Media Marketing for a waiver of fees for a special event on Pet Fest on June the 1st. This is a free festival to the public to be held at the grounds between Town Hall and Parks and Rec. And I'll turn it over at this time to Ms. Kelly West.
Hey, what are you guys doing?
Hello.
So, we're ready to do Pet Fest again. I'm so excited to see all of you. It will be June 1st at Hope Mills Park, just like we did last year. The thing is wobbly, I'm sorry. And we got a lot of special things planned, of course. Naturally Unleashed is our title sponsor and FAPs is our charity of choice this year, the Fayetteville Animal Protection Society. Our big event, our presentation, is going to be someone who's out of Georgia. His name is Canines in Flight and he is amazing. He has 57 feet of nothing but amazingness for six dogs he has rescued. They're all rescue dogs and that's why he's agreed to do this event because of who we, our charity is with FAPs. So, looking forward to it. I just can't wait to be part of it. I know that Beth and her Stormwater people over there, yeah, whatever it's called, she's getting the poopy bags. Megan is helping with getting some horses and they've just been amazing at the Parks and Rec, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
Okay, and the fee that she's requesting us to?
It's $300 and we waived it last year.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Unlike a motion, we waived the fee.
All right, we have a motion, whichever, either Ms. Emmerich or Commissioner Legg, both of them, whichever. All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, looking forward to it. Thank you so much and thank you for all you do for us, especially on our food truck events and parades and everything. We appreciate it.
Well, I love it and I love being part of the town of Hope Mills. I do. Thanks, you guys. I love you.
Thank you. Okay, Item B on our agenda has already taken place, so we will skip over that and that's where we had the information for the party grant that was given to us during the past presentation. Next, we have proclamation, and this is the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina proclamation of the Town Charter Day, whereas our town's founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, established an act to incorporate the town of Hope Mills and whereas it was ratified March the 9th, 1891, and signed into law by the Secretary of State W.L. Saunders in Raleigh, March 31st, 1891, and whereas 2019 marks the 100th and 28th year anniversary since the town's incorporation and the Board of Commissioners wishes to observe this anniversary. Now, therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim March the 9th, 2019, to be Town Charter Day. And I think what I would like to ask is if we do have a copy of the Town Charter, that we could have that so on March the 9th, we could look at that as a board?
Okay.
Okay? I don't think this board has been exposed to that and that was something that we did do previously is actually have a copy of the Town Charter. Okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, public hearings, there are none, public comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize Julia Gilmore.
Good evening, Julia Gilmore, 5531 Heather Street, Hope Mills. Very sad to see that I am the only one here to speak. I see that the other folks that normally have something to say to you have abandoned ship, I think. It's kind of sad. And my purpose tonight is to tell you that I still remain unclear as to what your true intent is and what your agenda is. You know, between meeting to meeting, there's always some little hiccup where we're not playing well together. And it just concerns me, it saddens me, that you are not united better than that. I understand the checks and balances system, but a house divided against itself cannot stand. And from meeting to meeting, I get to read these unfortunate episodes that have happened. And this last one is the thing with the Historic Commission. I mean, cannot we get on the same page, people, and stay there? I mean, you've got, it's a wing and a wang all the time with something, the YMCA, the lone survivor, and we've got these people over here and these people over here. We need to work together. There's a purpose to that and it's to help me. This is my community. I'm invested in this. My brother designed that logo. That's what kind of history I have here. And when you need something to do and you're looking for all this research and looking for things and reading, investigating, I would encourage you to actually seek ways that you can work with the Chamber of Commerce to promote Hope Mills, to help the businesses stay here, to promote the ones that we have so that they can stay open. Search for grants if you're looking for something to do. Look for some grants that would benefit the Police Department, the Recreation Department, the library, anything that would be beneficial. Find alternate ways to promote the town, anything that's positive instead of this other stuff that I keep seeing going on. And I'll keep coming here as long as it takes. I don't have a problem with that. This is my community too. And I thank you for your service, but we've got to get to be better players. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public comments for this evening. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'll read the agenda and if there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration of approval, the minutes from February 7th, 2019, special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from February 11th, 2019, special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from February 18th, 2019, regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from February 19th, 2019, special meeting. Consideration of approval of the renewal of mutual automatic aid agreement in fire protection between Fort Bragg's Fire and Emergency Services and Hope Mills Fire Department. Consideration of approval of Budget Amendment Number 9, the insurance proceeds of $167,175.04 have been received for damage to the Recreation Center from Hurricane Florence. Is there anything you'd like moved from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve it? Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Old Business, the first item under Old Business is consideration of changes to boards, committees, and commissions and appointment procedure process rules. Okay.
I guess this will be me doing it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, y'all may recall, we had some discussion at the last couple of meetings about the differences in some of the policies we had with regard to appointments to boards and committees. And last meeting, I presented a proposed revision to the rules and there was some desire that I'd come back with a couple of different options of how to accomplish that. What I presented is a set of rules that could either be put into the rules of procedure as written, probably under Rule 39, or could be adopted as a separate policy. There's a provision in there, subsection D, which allows the board to waive, you know, those requirements for ad hoc or temporary commissions at the board's approval, which was one of the requests from the last meeting that we have that option presented. So, it's really up to the board as to whether we want to adopt that as a separate policy, put that into the rules of procedure. Are there provisions in the proposed rules that the board may or may not want to adopt? And then, the other issue, I believe, was in our current Rule 38 of the Rules of Procedure, I believe a subsection C says that the mayor may vote pursuant to these rules. I did speak with Trey Allen at School of Government. He reads Rule 38 to be more broad than just appointments to the board, you know, Board of Commissioners itself, it would apply to all boards and committees. The suggested language for, in the comments of the rules, do say that if the mayor is a non-voting member, they recommend that it, that you say that the mayor not vote. But I think it's up to the board how we want to do it. So, there's a couple of different ways we could set it up. Any questions on that or suggestions?
As I requested in all the years that I've served as mayor, I have been allowed to do the appointments to ad hoc committees. I also make the appointments of liaisons to committees and I do set up committees such as the nominating committee and I do set up the finance committee. Those are committees that traditionally have always been a duty of the mayor. And I know that in one previous time in the board that we did state that we would have that as one of my duties and the board allowed me to do that. It's what I've continued to do the entire time that I've been mayor. I do not see the reasoning for not allowing the mayor to make those appointments. Whether I sit here or not, I do believe that that does lie with the responsibility of forming special committees because then you would have, any one member could form a special committee at any given time and that was the reason it was delegated to the mayor. But I will, you know, and that was the reason I believe that adding that, that you could approve for me to do that is something that would be what we have done in the past. And that would mean in the past, since I've been mayor and prior to that, I know that former Mayor Dees made the appointments and I know former Mayor Dever made all the appointments. So, it's not something that has not happened in previous terms.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I thought we adopted the Trey Allen Book of Rules and Procedures.
We did.
Okay, why are we discussing something? I mean, it explains in the book clearly what the naming of committee members or boards and things like that are concerned. It very clearly says in the book that the mayor is more or less a figurehead and she's supposed to represent the town in other ways in voting. And it also states that if she's a voting member, she has that right, but as a non-voting mayor, she doesn't have that right. Am I wrong or am I correct?
Well, I think the Rule C that we adopted, the Rule C in the Trey Allen Proposed Rules of Procedure has it both ways and you can pick which one you want to have in place. The comment to his Rules of Procedure does say that if the mayor is a non-voting member, that he recommends that you say, have Rule C say that the mayor does not vote. What I think we've done in the past, and I think, first of all, the nominating committee is spelled out in the Rule 38 or 39, either one, independently. But if you wanted to allow the mayor to continue to, you know, create ad hoc or temporary committees as has been done, that would be done pursuant to the proposed Section D of the Rules of Procedure that I have sent to y'all. The reason that we have those rules is because there are various rules that the board has come up with over the years with regard to committees and how people are nominated to committees that have been put in different places and some of them were inconsistent. And so, there was a, once we realized that we had some inconsistent rules on how nominations are done, I attempted to put all those rules into one place. And that's the document before you is those rules that have been created by the board that are not in the suggested rules by Trey Allen but are rules that the board has independently adopted over the years. You know, for example, keeping applications on file for a year, some of those types of rules. Last meeting, we, the board voted that two members of the Veterans Affairs Committee who are non-residents would be voting members. So, those types of rules that the board has created over the years that are not included in the suggested proposed rules by Trey Allen need a place to go. And so, the policy that I've drafted here is an attempt to gather all those rules in one place. And I think the question is, do we want to, I guess, one, do you want to keep those rules? Two, if you do want to keep those rules, do you want to have them adopted as a separate policy or do you want to incorporate them into the rules of procedure? And the reason I sort of, it is totally up to the board how you want to do that. I think there is some value into having all of the rules with regard to committees in one place rather than having the Rules of Procedure in a separate document that you also have to go to to find out what all the rules are. Just as for ease of use, I feel like it's good to have them in one place. But if the board wants to keep the Rules of Procedure straight, this is Trey Allen's proposed rules and that's what we go with, we could have a separate policy that applies some of those additional rules that the board has created for boards and committees.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember a long time ago when we're talking about the temporary and ad hoc committees and it was agreed at that time that we would let the mayor do that based on the fact that sometimes the commissioners aren't always in unity on different issues and the mayor seems to have this knowledge and perspective as to each commissioner and what their responsibilities in the past have been and where they'd be most advantageous to some of these committees. And I think it would be good to leave it as it is.
Madam Mayor. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue to use Trey Allen's Rule 38 and 39, changing Letter C to reflect what Trey Allen has suggested and also keeping in line with General Statute 168-69, Rule 17 of our book as well, which would leave D off of the proposed rules for boards and committees.
Kevin.
For a little clarification, does that include where you put the no?
Yes, yes, that would be the correction on C on Rule 38.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My question is, does the yes conflict with state statutes? Because I just heard, does it conflict with, does it conflict with the state statute? Seventeen, is that what I heard?
It's 168-69. It's Rule 17 in our book.
I think if it's, the mayor's votes in case of a tie, so it probably, that particular provision probably does. If you allow the mayor to vote just on straight, people are nominated to a committee and the mayor would vote yes or no, I think that might.
It would conflict with the state statute?
Right. So, that change probably should be. I think subsection D wouldn't necessarily conflict because it's not a voting role, more like, you know, creating ad hoc committees. So, that doesn't necessarily conflict with the statute, but it's how the board wants to do it.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm not sure what it actually does state other than.
I said, it's what the, I have never voted other than voting in case of a tie. I've not voted on appointments. I've not, when you do the nominating committee, they recommend the appointments and that's, the board votes on that. The only time I have voted and it's been very few times, it's been in case there's been a tie and that's when we've been absent a board member. As far as the powers the mayor has, those are governed by what the commissioners allow the mayor to do. And in the past, the mayor has been allowed to do appointments to ad hoc committees. I've appointed people to the Coman Foundation Grant Committee, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell at that time was appointed to that. I've set up the Economic Development Committee. I've set up special committees relative to special times and those committees usually serve for a duration of that time. The Lake Festival Committee was an example and then that committee was changed to a formal committee and changed its name to Festival Committee. I don't believe that this exception, which would mean that you would be saying that you would, the Item D here should not be included because I believe the mayor should have the opportunity to form ad hoc committees. I do know, and I will go on record in saying this, probably my last committee appointment is what has caused this and that is because I appointed people to that committee that are outside the realms of the Hope Mills proper and that was because of the thoughts that partnership would help the town of Hope Mills. So, my most recent committee assignment, I'm sure, is what's triggered this, trying to limit my ability to form committees. And I still believe the mayor should have that. When I'm not here as mayor, I believe the next mayor would want to have that responsibility. So, it is at the wish of the board. We have a motion on the floor and that is that we take the rules as they are, taking out the mayor may vote, which the mayor, like I said, only had voted in times of a tie. And that has already been changed to in the Rules of Procedure because by stating that you have to have a full board anytime that there is a major decision about property or any other thing, you have to have all five board members here to hear it. Then I don't really get to vote in case of a tie either because there's not ever going to be a major decision made without all board members here.
To clarify, this would only apply, this rule only applies to nominations to committees.
I know, that's what this one replies to. We've had the other changes. Every time there's a need to make a change, it's made. All right, so this would, the motion on the floor is to eliminate Item D, which would allow me that under this provision and to remove the statement in here that was originally in here that said I may vote, but it's not something that's been used anyway. All those in favor of this motion, if you would signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, be a four one. Thank you.
And to clarify, under the state statute, you'd still be voting in case of a tie?
Correct. Next thing on our agenda is consideration proposed amendment to the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance. Do I give that to you also?
Yeah, I'll take this one as well. And really, I have not made a lot of changes, I don't think, to this particular ordinance. I think the only thing that I have added is subsection 12 at the end that's highlighted there, which would just, and I think it's statutory anyway, that the Board of Commission issues certificates of appropriateness. But I just clarified that the board is authorized to issue such certificates. And what that is, if someone is building or tearing down a building in something that has been designated historic district, you generally have to apply for a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Commission and they consider things like, you know, the congruity with other buildings so that the nature of the historic district is maintained. And it gives them some discretion to grant or deny based on, you know, how consistent the proposed either destruction or building is with the district. And that, of course, is a decision that is sort of quasi-judicial in nature, which can be appealed to the Board of Commissioners, or I'm sorry, the Board of Adjustment and then from there appealed on to Superior Court. So, it is sort of in the nature of a quasi-judicial role that is statutory in nature for boards or for historic district commissions.
Any questions in reference to this? Do we have the guidelines for who is supposed to serve on this commission and are those met? I know there's a specific statute that specifies or there's, that says the qualifications of those that serve on this committee or commission in order that they can make these designations.
I have not checked into the particular members of the current commission to ensure that they are consistent, but the requirements are laid out in the first section here. It's supposed to be consistent with General Statute 160A-400.7 et cetera, which is what lays out the role of the Historic District Commission. I believe it says, first of all, that they reside within the territorial jurisdiction of the municipality continually throughout their employment and that a majority of the members shall have demonstrated special interest, experience, or education in history, architecture, archaeology, or related fields. So, in other words, a majority of the members should have some background in those fields because they're going to be considering, you know, issues such as whether a particular proposed building is consistent with. proposed building is consistent with the general architecture and nature of the historic district.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know the answer with regard to the...
I just, I know that when we were looking at this when Amber was here, there was some details as far as the criteria that had to be met so that they could make those decisions.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, there's a proposal, I guess we need a motion?
So move it.
Have a motion to approve the change or the addition to the Historic Commission. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, the next item on the agenda is consideration proposed amendment to the Appearance Commission Ordinance.
And this is along the same lines. What I did is just take the current ordinance we had for Community Appearance Commission and try to track it a little closer to the statutory language that, that authorizes us to establish such a commission. If you look, the parts that are in red are the powers and duties that are set out in the statute that we did not have in our current ordinance. And I, I think these are probably items that you can or cannot, you can decide to grant or not grant, but I wanted to lay those out for you, and just so you could have those for consideration. But these are the items in red that are authorized by statute, but not in our current ordinance. So if you wanted to update it to allow the Community Appearance Commission to have these authorities, and most of them are, you know, recommending things to the board, but you can read what they are.
We do have a commission, not a committee, right?
Correct, yes.
Any discussion, any things you'd like to discuss in reference to these changes in red that would be made?
And, and the other things I added, I think, are these last three sections that are essentially track the statutory language, but it, it just clarifies that they are required to issue an annual report, which is statutorily required anyway. It, we're just putting it in the ordinance so that it's readily accessible for everyone. And then same thing with staff services and receipt and expenditure of funds. Those are, again, statutory provisions that were not in our current ordinance.
Motion to approve Tab 12 with consideration of amendment of Appearance Commission Ordinance.
Have a motion, and I do think it would be important to go over this with our, the Appearance Commission, because these will be duties and responsibilities that will be new to them.
Right.
Just seems, Madam Mayor, that, yeah, we're just going to coordinate this with staff, because it seemed like there'd be some overlap and could be conflicting information if we got Appearance Commission members reaching out to public officials and not coordinating that with our town staff.
Right. I, I think you would want to make sure that they are going, either going through town staff to get...
There should be a coordinated effort, I would think.
Yes.
Otherwise, we could end up with some conflicting information.
Agreed. And then maybe there's a way to, you know, they, they have their own rules of procedure, or they, they should have their own rules of procedure, and one of those rules could be that, you know, requests to the board are made at, you know, regularly scheduled open meetings, or something along those lines.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I withdraw that motion in lieu of other discussion if needed.
Okay. Any other discussion in reference to this?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Dan, if, if we don't include six through thirteen in the ordinance, does that change the designation of commission to a committee?
No.
Okay.
You still, you, you've established them as a commission, which is, you know, your, your statutory authorized to do. It's just a question of whether you want to grant them all of these powers and duties or, or not.
Okay, so six through thirteen is optional?
I, I, I think it is, I, I've had some discussion with the school of government about this.
Yeah.
And, you know, are we required to grant every statutory duty and authority that's in the statute? And they said that there is some, there is some leeway there that you don't have to adopt it as written. I'm not aware of a court opinion that says either way, but that is the guidance from the school of government that I received.
Well, the reason I ask that is, of course, historically, six through thirteen is not in our ordinance, and I, my guess has not ever been in our ordinance. So...
And I don't know if there was a reason for that. Presumably, there was, but that can, can be changed or not be changed.
Or we could leave it like it is, and not add these at all.
Correct.
Is there anything in this six through thirteen rules that could come back or to haunt us?
Well, that's a difficult question. I, I, not that I can think of, but that's...
I mean, in, in public hearings, are those quasi judicial, or?
Well...
Under thirteen?
If you look at, if you look at the, the things, you know, to request from proper officials of any public agency or body, it's plans for public buildings, so they can ask, you know, for, for plans for public buildings, or, or something like that. It's really, that's, that allows them to gather information and, and carrying out the purposes of the commission. Like number seven, to review these plans and make recommendations regarding their aesthetic suitability to the appropriate agency, or to the municipal or county planning or governing board. So they, they would have the authority to weigh in on, not make decisions, but to weigh in on the suitability of those plans.
What's thirteen, though? I mean, to conduct public meetings and hearings, what do they mean by hearings?
Well, it would be, you know, in the nature of studying visual, that, it would give them, I don't think they would have authority to really make any determinations, but it would be in the nature of hearings or public meetings with regard to, you know, visual problems and needs of the town. So it, it is, it just gives them more authority. But again, that's not something that's required to be granted.
So if they go through a hearing, what, I mean, can they make a ruling of, of the hearing?
I think what they can do is make a recommendation. The only powers they have are these powers listed out here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just, I'm going to make a motion just to leave it as is.
They're all part of the, that all part of the statute, though?
Those, the, all of these are layout...
Why did you put those in red? Just because they're, they're the ones that we'd be adding from this?
Correct, they're the ones that we don't currently have in the ordinance.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bellflowers.
No, no, it's fine. Madam Mayor, I just make a motion, we just leave the ordinance as is.
Without the red?
Without the red, without six through thirteen. Obviously, they haven't been there historically.
Is there a problem if we don't add this? Again, can that come back to haunt us?
Again, that's, that's, that's asking me to see into the future, which I can't do, but I, not that I can think of.
Okay, just a recommendation anyway, right?
I, I don't see any, I don't see any real harm in leaving it as is, or in adopting it as, as, as written in the statute.
Call for the vote.
It's really will of the board.
Okay, so we have a motion to leave it as is, to not include the items that are in red. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, on our new business, consideration discussion of Rockfish Road sidewalk. I put this on here because there was some concerns in reference to the sidewalk that we received the grant for. I did talk to DOT at length about it, and because it's unknown the actual start date of the improvements to Rockfish Road, and there's still some concerns about the roundabouts, that they say we moved forward with the sidewalk, that we should have possibly as, as much as three years to use it, and if we proceed as we are, then what will happen is anything that they damaged by widening of the road, they will replace at no cost to the town. So it is a, a grant that has been on the books for quite some time. There's been some concern about the cost of the engineering fees and the cost of it, but that cost is only going to increase over time. And we do, anytime they put in sidewalks, they do request or ask for a 20% match, which is not a bad deal for the town, because the full cost is so expensive. But I did just want to bring that up, that I know there'd been some concerns and some talk about what we would have to do. Any money that we've spent, my understanding is, that's part of our 20% of the total. And I do know they're at the phase now that they should be able to get started pretty soon. I guess I could ask the town manager on that one.
Yeah, I think they were expecting a new schedule today, so, yeah, to the schedule of when they're going to get started.
Okay. Okay, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I didn't want the public to think that we were not wasting tax dollars. This is actually a good thing, because we will have the sidewalk that will extend from Goffview down to Johnson, and then the next leg of it goes from Johnson to Trade Street. And those are all grants that we received through DOT and through FAMPOE. The next item on our agenda is discussion, consideration regarding setting a date to request a presentation or status report of NC DOT road construction projects in the Hope Mills area. And I don't, I was going to mention to Commissioner Bellflowers, I know that the calendar of events that we've had, that was what that was for, so I don't know if you want a separate presentation after they've already done the, the one at Rockfish School and the one out at the church on Orchard Drive, Orchard Road?
Well, the main reason, Mayor, that I'm asking for is a couple reasons. One of them, and I'll brief this in my Rulak report too, in the recent Rulak meeting, Andrew Barksdale, who's the Public Relations Officer for Division Four, Six, and Eight, gave a wonderful presentation of all the road widening projects that are going on in Carmelene County and Harnett County and Moore County and Richmond County. He went through this slide by slide by slide, and it, and when I look at these maps, it goes, it goes where I would like to request that he or someone from Division Six do the same thing for the projects in Hope Mills, because not a lot of folks had the opportunity to go to either one of those public hearings, public viewings that you see back there on the back wall. And there are a tremendous amount of folks still ask questions about road widening projects. And I just think that, and I asked him if he would tailor a specific presentation just for Hope Mills area and the MIA, and he said he would love to do that. I just think it'd be a great informational piece for the public, and for us, of all the road widening projects that are ongoing. And I want to thank Commissioner Larson for going down to DOT and grabbing at least those three maps that are on the back wall. And this would also include 295.
Do you have a date in mind, Mr. Bellflowers?
Well, first off, we have to agree that we want the presentation, and if we do, then we would direct our town manager to contact Andrew, which I have his card, and set up a future meet, a future date.
Would you want to set that up as a, a public hearing type, a special meeting for the public, rather than just a presentation to the board? If you want more, more board, I mean, more community input?
I think it'd be well attended.
Okay, but I mean, we'd have to...
In fact, yeah, it would be well attended.
Well, you'd have, would have, doing it as a, just a presentation to the board or just follow on our agenda, but if we advertised it as a special, separate meeting, I guess that would be the thought would be.
Just a special presentation.
I've spoken to town manager Adams and finance director Holland about the very same thing. I, I thought it has to be put on the budget retreat, subject matter, but to get a quarterly or every six month type update from DOT of this very nature, to keep us all in the same loop, on the same team, so that we know what's going on, especially with these six new corridors coming in for 295.
Oh, yeah.
So however y'all want to shake it out, don't matter to me, but, yeah, we need to be updated on a regular basis, I feel like.
Okay, so you want to just ask for a date, find out what dates would be available from Mr. Barksdale?
Consensus to do this?
Yes.
Can, can we just have it as an informational item on our agenda?
No, I think it'd be a presentation, because, I mean, you're, you're covering a number of, a number of maps, and there'll probably be some discussion regarding all of those. I mean, I went through, when, when Andrew went through his presentation in Rulak, he was well into it over an hour, of just going through the different parts and pieces.
So you, you would prefer to do it at a special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
And that's for the public. It really is. It's not so much for us, but it's for the public to cut, to come in and, and see a presentation themselves. I mean, maybe some of them didn't have the opportunity to go to 59 or, or the Golf, Golfview, or even the one down at Seaweed and Collier. I mean, because they have them on different nights, but if we cover all the projects at one time, then maybe, you know, the public would, would want to come and see the whole, the whole picture, and not just part of it.
So your motion is to...
Just by consensus, everybody agrees, and she's going to set it up for it.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration regarding donut hole annexations and review of the proposed focus areas.
Oh, that's me too.
That's you too.
Ah, yeah. Madam Mayor, this is just a continuation discussion from the, from the last one, and I had an email included in the agenda packet for all the commissioners to read, and I think that if, we either should go through the packet that was presented to us at the last meeting, and if there are some areas in there that we really want staff to focus on, some true donut hole properties, then we should be able to direct staff to do that, and the internal town departments to provide cost projections on any of these donut areas. So I just, so basically, it was just a continuation of the presentation that, that Chancellor provided for us.
After hearing from staff, we've got $22 million worth of stormwater projects, and we're clipping about $800,000 a year. We've got to take care of our own first over the next 25 years. It's going to take us 25 years to get adequate stormwater for our existing citizens. I make a motion right now that we kill any idea of closing up these donut holes and this forced annexation tonight.
I'm with you. Yeah, that's why I brought it up. It's either we move forward with it, or we just end it.
We have some places, oh, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
We have some places, like on Heather Street, where there's a house sitting by itself, surrounded by town, right on the corner of Heather and Goffview. It's in the county. It's got our garbage cans sitting there, if I'm not mistaken. Our police and fire go by it every day. Places like that, I would like to, to go forward with, with the possibility of, of annexation, but these places that are wide open on the sides?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of land grabbing those. But there are some places that if they're surrounded by the town, that I think we might want to move forward in the near future, for looking at, at solving that problem.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to stop no further concern or consideration...
For donut hole annexation?
For donut hole annexation, which would, would you entertain the areas that Commissioner Legg is discussing? No? All right, the motion is to stop all donut annexation consideration. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, thank you very much, and the town staff for all the work that you put into this binder, because I tell you, thank you very much for that, because it took a lot of work and a lot of hours for us to make a decision to stop this thing, because it, because it definitely is going to cost us a lot of money. So I want, I don't want that to go unnoticed, Chancellor, not at all.
If we can get our own taken care of, maybe we can look at that 10 years from now.
Next on our agenda, we have the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Concerning the Lake Bulkhead Project, the notice to proceed was issued on February the 25th, and the contractor is currently in the process of ordering the materials. Johnson Street Sidewalk McGill is working on the environmental assessment for DOT review. The Trade Street Museum location, staff can... The Trade Street Museum location, staff continues to work on the building as time allows. Design to build architecture drawings have been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and they've requested minor changes to work out with the architect and gutting of kitchen for display. Public Works is reviewing those changes with the architect, and will be issuing an RFQ to follow. The former golf course property, we have asked that DOT give a cursory look at the proposed temporary driveway location, and DOT has requested a simple sketch and identification of the proposed location for review. We will proceed with the formal request with their concurrence. Of course, that may change somewhat, we'll maybe wait to see what Rachel finds out this week, so. The annual medicine drop-off event, sponsored by the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, is scheduled for Saturday, March the twenty-third, from nine AM until two PM at the Hope Mills Fire Department. Spring sports opening day and the unveiling of the Gary Dove Memorial Building at Brower Park has been rescheduled for Saturday, April the sixth, beginning at nine AM. In addition, this day is being proclaimed as Gary Dove Day, and we will be bringing a proclamation for your approval at an upcoming, at the upcoming agenda later this month. The spring session of the Citizens Academy begins on Tuesday, April the second, and runs for eight weeks from six PM to eight PM. We currently do have enough students to proceed with this class, but we would like to have a few more, if at all possible, so please help get the word out there. I know several of you share the postings on social media, and that's greatly appreciated, and it does help. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that, don't we need to?
Yes, sir, no, that's fine.
Is there age limit on that? How young, how old?
Um, high school, I would say the age limit. If they're a high school student, student, we will accept them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Our first food truck rodeo of the year is scheduled for Thursday, April the fourth, beginning at five PM. And a follow-up meeting regarding the flooding of Seane Wing Collier Elementary School and Dever Circle, with representatives of Cumberland County Schools, NC DOT, and Cumberland County, along with staff, has been scheduled for Tuesday, March the twelfth. Also, I did wanna let you all know that we will be recognizing the Small Business Award at the next meeting, and the Volunteer of the Month on, at the April first regular meeting, because they were not able to attend a meeting this month. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, as far as the reminders, I think most of them that Ms. Adams has gone over. Important one is our retreat is this Saturday, and it's from eight to three, and that's at Camp Rockfish. March tenth, we have daylight saving time starts back. Next, we have the committee liaisons, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we didn't have them last month. On the reminders, the Historical Preservation Commission will be meeting on the thirteenth of March at five o'clock. That was omitted in there, I think, but.
Yeah.
So I think one more meeting at the rec center, right?
Okay.
That's all we had.
All right. Commissioner Edwards, the Lake Advisory Committee?
Don, did we have a meeting last month? No, we didn't have a meeting last month.
Commissioner Legg, the Appearance Committee and the Festival Committee?
Yes, the, the Appearance Committee met last week. They had a hang-up about flag that they were gonna order for part of downtown to display, but they, the estimated price they got was nothing like the one they were supposed to get, so they're going back to the drawing board and start all over again. And we're moving forward with the Festival Committee, trying to get, find out if the Bulkhead's gonna interfere with any of the, of the presentations by the Festival Committee or what might happen.
Okay. Parks and Rec, Commissioner Larson?
We did have a meeting. They had a long discussion about the YMCA. I'm gonna, I've got Paulette's handwritten notes, so bear with me here. So the chair asked the board how they felt about the YMCA presentation. Some of them felt it was a little too casual, and the presentation was kind of out of place, didn't really give us enough information, is, is what they were looking for. They also felt that maybe a lot of the people were thinking this was gonna be more of a public facility, an outdoor pool, splash pad, rather than an indoor aquatic center, and the discussion went from there, the price difference between an indoor facility and maintenance versus an outdoor pool and splash pads. They are, most of them, I believe, will be coming to the March twentieth meeting for the feasibility meeting that we're having here on March twentieth to six thirty in this room. Let's see what else I got here. They didn't really see where the win-win was for the town as far as how it was going to benefit the people having to pay large fees every month to belong to the YMCA. And of course, we don't have those figures yet, because we haven't done the, we haven't gotten them from the YMCA. So we did talk about that, but felt that, we did discuss about their twenty acres and why they haven't built on their own twenty acres versus that they want road frontage of our property. Then they went into a little bit about appearance issues in the park, and I think that they felt that maybe that we were stepping a little bit on the toes of the Appearance Committee, Commission, so they wanted to know how the board would like to address park appearance issues with the Appearance Committee, so that it was not something that would be stepping on their toes, basically. And that was about the gist of most of the conversation.
Okay, Commissioner Bellflowers, Veterans Committee and Rulak?
Thank you, Mayor. Veterans Affairs Committee, the new name now, met on Thursday, February twenty-eighth, and all members were there, and there was one excuse. Some of the notes from the meeting is that the committee would like to request certificate presentations for Ron Murray's wife, Donna. I think Jean Clark has, has one, but just in case she doesn't, for her service on the committee, and for venture crew members that participated in our Veterans Day ceremony. And they're requesting that they be presented during one of our board meetings, and we'll get the names to Town Manager. Also talked about the May third event coming up, which is a Veterans Outreach Day, sponsored by VFW Post Ten Six Thirty, American Legion Thirty-two, Mission BBQ, and Lone Survivor Foundation are the main sponsors of the Veterans Outreach Day, which is the first time in Hope Mills that that will occur. And it's from nine to, I think, two. They also talked about Facebook page, they want that to go live, and I think Megan Hawkins is gonna be the admin personally, she said she was. Swamp Dogs Baseball is coming up, and they're, they're looking at, this is through Post Ten Six Thirty and American Legion Thirty-two, they're looking at trying to do a Veteran's Service Organizational Day during one of the games out, out there at the Swamp Dogs. Of course, we know about the name change for the Veterans Affairs Commission, now it's Committee. They would like to change the time to, from seven PM to six PM. And I don't know if that takes board action, or if that's just?
It's just a public, public notice.
Okay, they would like to have that time changed to six. And finally, this year is an important year, as every year is for our veterans. One of the themes that we're discussing this year, in conjunction with Hero's Homecoming, is, as most folks know, this is the seventy-fifth anniversary of Normandy. And it is a huge amount of events to recognize our ninety-plus veterans across our great nation, of those that served in Normandy. And we're look, the Veterans, the Committee is, Veterans First Committee is looking at doing that as the theme over Veterans Day, pretty much in, in the same format that we did with our World War One veterans. We would like to read the names and honor each veteran that served at Normandy, and honor them and honor their families on Veterans Day. So that's a big discussion that's gonna go on in the planning phases going forward. And the official Hero's Homecoming theme, Mayor, has not been established, as Angie's been out, but that meeting's getting ready to be scheduled in March, and I know that this is one of the, the topics that'll probably be used this year, and we call it Normandy Seventy-Five. I think it's huge for, for Hope Mills, it's huge for our community. And let's see, that's it for Veterans Affairs Committee. Over on Rulak, they met also last week, so I had both of them in one week, that was good. There was a presentation from Secretary Larry Hall from the NC Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, great guy, gave a military legislative update, which was huge. Also had the presentation from Andrew Barksdale on the construction projects, and I briefed about that earlier. And then finally, we had a presentation on analysis of Rulak case reviews, which was excellent as well, and he went through a bunch of those, and this was a very long meeting at the Hilltop, and it was very informational. And from that, their next meeting is scheduled in May, and that concludes both committees, Mayor, and thank you.
Okay. I attended three committees, or three special events during this past month. One was the Cumberland County School Strategic Plan, and that was to, it was more like a big town hall, and we, I was representing Hope Mills at that, and what they were trying to do is come up with ways that they can improve Cumberland County schools, and also to get input from those people that are affected by the different things that happened. They wanted us to, to narrow it down to three to five focus areas. There were about five hundred people there, it was most, it was most encouraging to see that many parents there, and also it was very encouraging to see the way Dr. Conley had planned it. He actually had Clifdel Elementary and Seventy-first High School as primetime sites, so that parents could come there, they had children, childcare, they rode on activity buses to Fuller Center, and so that you had more turnout and greater turnout, because, and they set up a site there also, but it, the place was full, and it was interesting to see that most of the Cumberland County School staff was there, but just the interest from parents. And we did have a good turnout from our area, however they set us with, or mingled us with everybody from the whole community that was recommended to be there. And again, that was by special invitation, it was, and it was good to see a good turnout. Next thing I attended was the Tier One Committee meeting, and this is a committee that I was appointed to in reference to our county being called a Tier One County, and that is because of the, the things that we have that have dropped us down to an area of, of concern. And of course, shared the last time I went to a meeting, is that they're looking for additional ways of pulling us out of the situations of high dropout, a low graduation rate, poverty, the special needs that we have as a community, it's all of Cumberland County, but Hope Mills fits as a part of that. One thing that they suggested that we do as a town, and I was gonna suggest this, is one that we come up with a strategic plan for economic development, that each municipality should have their own, and then we can have our vision that would match the vision of the entire county, and they recommend that we come up with a vision on where we want to be, so that then we can, the next meeting we have, we can come back with some ideas and have some collective strength, all the counties, municipalities working together. They did talk about how we need to probably try new things and create new things, and they're, again, this meeting was made up of Department of Commerce, the City of Fayetteville, City of Spring Lake, Hope Mills, a variety of people that are in different types of community efforts, partnership for children, I, just to name one or two, but the idea is to bring the entire community together to try to seek ways of making our whole community, all of Cumberland County, better. And so that was very, very good meeting also, I'm glad to represent Hope Mills there. The other thing that I attended was the FAMPO Special Meeting, and this was on Wednesday, and this was for the STIP plan, and that is the plan for roads through 2045. And as I sat there and listened to the plans up until 2045, I realized how old I would be then, and probably that would be one of those plans that I probably wouldn't live to see fulfillment of. But the idea was, every time we make these plans, they have to make them outward as many years as possible, because of the number of roads and stuff that they're planning for. But this actually, STIP is the, the plan that we'll be voting on as FAMPO, but I'll bring that, that plan back to the board in full, so they can see it. And again, that would be the road, the roadway plan up to 2045. Right now, we've got it up to 2020, 2025, so just now they're adding some more years to it. And those were the, the things that I attended this past week. Any staff comments?
No, thank you.
Any official comments?
I would just like to thank everybody that came out tonight, and Dan, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate the McAdams group for their presentation tonight. It's already been mentioned, but I'll mention again, I didn't bring any invitations to town hall to be put in the boxes, but everyone's invited to opening day at Brower Park for Gary Dove Day, the dedication of that building, which is, is much deserved, it really is. And that'll be going on Saturday morning at nine AM. I think there's some other things going on this weekend, so we'll have to try to work it all in, get it all taken care of. And thank you very much for being so patient this evening.
Okay. Any other official comments?
I'd just like to remind the public, the budget retreat is this Saturday, Camp Rockfish, it is open to the public. I think we're starting out about eight or eight-thirty.
Breakfast at eight.
Come have a cup of coffee.
Come hang out with us, talk numbers.
If there's not anything else, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, we'll see you Saturday, we hope.